We need to make the change. Anything turned in should be turned in. The chair has time. It doesn't matter who's chair. But they need to take me aware of what's going on.
And most guys, you know, you're well on a certain stage, so they could judge.
Keep it here. He controls the town.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you too, sir.
Yep.
Hey folks, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Charles County Council meeting of Tuesday, May the 28th, 2024. We will begin our meeting with an invocation given by Assistant Pastor Brad Harris of St. Charles Bible Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Dave Hammond. Please stand.
Let's pray together, may we? Dear God in heaven, we're so thankful as we reflect on what we celebrated yesterday and as we honor those who served our country and gave their all for our freedom, willing to fight from the very inception of this great nation. God may it just well up inside of us, a heart of gratitude, willing to serve others, willing to serve our community, and willing to submit to the authority of God Almighty. What I pray that you bless each and everyone here, those who are represented as leaders in our community, and those who are willing servants to do what is better for their neighbor and to do what is greater for our community's good. I pray you bless this meeting for this time to make the wise decisions that would please you most and help others around us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson.
Here ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
All right, we will begin tonight with public comments. Just a reminder of filling out a speaker card and also that your comments will be limited to three minutes to there. And we will start with who?
On the resolution, Boris Wood Scarborough.
That's really close, thank you.
This one in the middle, ma'am.
In the middle, okay. Thank you. My family moved here in 2004, and my sons used to skateboard to the Kisker Library, skateboard back books in their backpack. Now they take their children there. It's more than a place to get books. It's a gathering place, a safe place, a community place where we find out someone we go to church with actually lives around the corner from us because we see him at the library. The Kisker Library specifically has allowed my children, my grandchildren, neighbors and kids, and adults alike to enhance our education, to continue being lifelong learners, to have access to things we don't otherwise have access to due to finances or just availability. It's allowed kids to work on computers there. I've seen adults doing resumes there. You walk in and they know your name, like norm. And I just would hate to have to, for everyone to have to drive so much farther when a neighborhood library is truly a community place. I hope that we can keep it open. Thanks.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Larry Bosher.
Hi, I'm Larry Bosher. I'm 81 years old. I'm retired. I've lived in St. Charles all my life. Last week, we got a phone call, I guess about four o'clock, saying that McClay Library was going to be closed just in June. And then that, I think that night or the next night, there was going to be a meeting, which I attended. And I was absolutely stunned to hear that. I was stunned to hear that any of the libraries were closing but McClay, Kisker, we could also go to Kisker. And then I'd gone out and looked at Deer Run just yesterday, just to see what the library was like. These three libraries are first-class, top-of-the-line, really nice places. You know, in my book, they're new. I mean, if you had to tell me that they were 20 years old or two years old, I wouldn't be able to tell the difference. They're really nice places. And to be talking about closing them up is really insensitive to the people. My point I made the other day with the board was that all these tax increases, I've been here since, I was born here in '42, so I started voting, I think it was the '60 election, maybe not, maybe '64, I don't know, which first year. But every election that there was for school districts, library, road improvements, sales tax, all, I voted for every, every one of those tax increases. I believe that all those tax increases that we all complained about, that we didn't like, and what we passed and we paid for is the reason St. Charles County has grown like it has. It's kind of a jewel in the state of Missouri. You know, if you look around, it's, there's no stopping St. Charles County. It's growing. People are attracted to St. Charles County because of all this stuff that we have here, the way that is being done right. This is a step back. It's kind of, I think it sends a message that, that I don't get it, I don't understand it, but it's, it's, it's not friendly to neighborhood, community, that type of an idea. I see a lot of older men my age at the library, at McClay. I don't know where they come from, I don't know who lives where, but they're there. They're guys that look like they're older than me, actually. And I see little kids, a lot of little kids, and a lot of teenagers, and a lot of college students, and a lot of women, and a lot of women bringing their kids in, and a lot of grandpas bringing their grandkids in. And it's truly, as all libraries are, they're welcoming to the public, and I think they're really important, as important as parks, good roads, sidewalks, the whole works like that. So I would urge you to pass this resolution that all the, all the libraries and the branch libraries be kept open and that it be kept instead, that it keep in step with St. Charles County's purposes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chair Kamik.
I came here tonight in favor of the resolution, but I mean, I can't understand why this is even a question. Our libraries are part of our communities, part of our, I bought my home, the library was already there. I, I don't expect my community to lack services to enhance somebody else's job who wants to enhance why they were hired. And, you know, I think we've had more trouble in this community, in this library section, since he was hired and made CEO, and he has done nothing but provoke the community. And he's, you know, he's, he's made us very angry. And you know who gets the anger? You get it. Because you're our elected officials and you stand between us and you, you're supposed to provide oversight for what happens in the county and to the county facilities. So I am asking you to avoid any more anguish in our community and get on with telling the people that they will have their libraries, which they have come to defend. So I don't, I don't understand why you want to provoke us. See, so if, if I were you, I wouldn't do this. So goodnight.
Thank you ma'am. Next speaker is Arne Dino. Mr. Dino.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, county public advocate, running for United States Congress of the 3rd District. And first of all, I'd like to say, yesterday at Veterans Park was an unbelievable, great program. Kevin Colleen was the, in charge of putting that together by the staff. It was put together by Don Van, I believe he was chairman of the committee, and Mikey Lim was the emcee. Unfortunately, I didn't see the other six county council people, I don't believe I saw you, at the event yesterday, but it was a great event, and I'd like to say thank you to Kevin for all the hard work that he did. Royal O'Sullivan, you are not part of our community. You are not a member of our community. You don't live in our community. You live in South St. Louis, but yet you're reaping the benefits of $175,000 salary from our taxpayer dollars. You are not a registered voter of our county and therefore ineligible to hold your post under direct violation of our Home Rule County Charter. You keep playing games with me and other members of our county when we ask for public information requests under Chapter 610. It's games, games, and more games, and unfortunately, John Lycom and Steve Elman allow you to play the games like a tennis ball match. One, I'm making a public information request verbally under Chapter 610. For six months later, what is the actual salary of Kevin Colleen, the director of Public Relations, Public Information Officer? Or is he working for free for our 433 county residents? What about Mike Gibbons, the Legislative Report, who's getting $125,000 of lobbyist salary and expenses? And where's the reporter, Tom Dempsey, the former state senator, getting a salary of $125,000 plus expenses? Once and for all, Mr. O'Sullivan, you don't live here, you live in South St. Louis, in the city. You take our money, are upping their economy, but we'd like to know the answers, and I'd like you for once and for all to answer my public information requests and stop playing these games. Now, when it comes to the library district, Jason Cool, unfortunately, John Lycom, the Director of Administration, was in charge, along with Mrs. Zumwalt, who's no longer on the library board either, is Mrs. Lycom. And they brought him from a one library district with 150 employees to an 11-branch library district with 200, less than 250 employees, or around 250 employees. And it's been all about money for him. He's gotten three pay raises in the last year and a half, and so he's gotten over $30,000 in pay raises. A year ago March, he got $10,000. In September, he got a $15,000 pay raise. And now he wants to close our three branches, Deer Run, McClay, and Kisker Road, in residential neighborhoods that are zoned residential, and in lieu of paying more salaries. And so I ask that we don't lay off the 30% of our staff and let's keep open our libraries. I encourage you to pass the resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else? Colleen Lutz regarding property upkeep. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm in District 7, and I've been conversing with Tim Baker about a uncut property in our subdivision. And I'm just here representing my neighbors of the subdivision. It's, the property address is 3675 Summit Drive. As a neighbor and representing my fellow neighbors, we are very concerned and would like some assistance in helping out our neighbor. As you can see, and I have pictures for all of yous, this home is in definite need of repair, and the yard needs to be brought up to standards. Tim came out and walked the property with me. I live directly next door. And, you know, when I conversed with him on the phone, he was like, oh, we all have those unruly neighbors. When he seen it in person, he was appalled too, and he's 100% behind, you know, what we're trying to do here, get some help for our neighbor. I've been contacting the Building and Code Enforcement probably since 2019, submitting on the portal, there's a portal that you can, you know, ask for property or, you know, help, and I think she's summons and goes to court and then nothing happens. And this has been, you know, probably a good six years. So I'm asking the council if they can get with the Building and Code Enforcement and do something to get help for this lady, get this yard cleaned up. And you got anyone on the council is more than welcome to come by and look at it themselves. Like, like I said, Tim was like shocked when he came by. So that's, you know, I just have pictures and a little bit of information from the portal that I would like to share with yous. I have a copy of it, if you'd like.
You can leave it with them.
Give it to them.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Rose Zook on a resoning cable.
I have my flash right. Let's see if I can work it right today. That's what I needed.
Which one of these files you need?
The one that says, "I oppose."
Ah, of course. All right, there you go. Let's see, can we?
You need a bigger screen.
Oh yeah, well. All right, I think this should, there you go. There you go.
Hi, my name is Rose Zook, and I am opposing the Development Highway DD called Canine Country. This next slide shows what Lombardo is doing at Saxony Ridge down Highway Z, and they took 96 acres and they're putting 28 homes on three acre lets. That's just a reference.
I think you have to slide through because it's a PDF.
I'm gonna try and add, sorry. My guy should come back out. This one? That one?
There we go.
But I need it bigger. Can we make it bigger? I'm sorry.
We'll try.
Okay, that's good.
That's good, all right.
And then?
And then the clicker should just, I guess, try scrolling?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
That's good, that's, sorry.
No problem.
So if they're doing this at Saxony Ridge, why aren't they doing it at Canine Country? Instead of putting 120 homes on actually 62 acres, not 74, not 136 acres. So when we say there's 136 acres, there's really, and this information I also got from Jared Young, from the council, in plan and zoning. So they're really only using 62 acres for 120 homes, even though they're putting four three acres, four two acres, everything else is on less, it's on a quarter acre or less. And as was mentioned in the, in the plan and zoning, where is the pump lift stations going for the sewers? They said two, so is it going in the common ground? That's going to be at the top, the north part of the property or the lower part? And since there's going to be two, it's going to go across someone else's property or underneath their property. And in talking with the Missouri Department of Conservation, this is a letter actually that you have in your packet from Matt, of following their suggestions, recommendations of putting buffers even behind the houses that they've planned, that are on the top of the hill for, that are next to Bush Wildfire. Sorry. The, what's right next to it? Brownnessick Park with the astronomy park, which everybody got to see all the wonderful lights that night. So why isn't St. Charles County being more proactive in asking for three acre lights?
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Final speaker is Steve Martin on Bill 5296.
The, I know it's been in your packet, it's been discussed at planning and zoning, some of you've seen this before. I'm here for, I gotta get the bill number. It is 5297. The street, some of the road has been fully developed, all the homes have been built, but what they found out was my client's home is zoned agricultural while the homes adjoining it are R1E, which means the setback requirements for fences are different for this house than the others. And we had some foes, I mean, we're talking some substantial fences with brick and iron and so forth, and they found out that they'd have fences here, and this home would have a fence much deeper, closer to the house and to the street. The only reason for the zoning request is to ask that you rezonate so that their fence will line up with their neighbor's fence out front. It was recommended by staff, planning and zoning voted in favor of it. If you have questions, I'm happy to do it. I don't want to push my time too far here, but I think you have all the information in front of you. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So that was the last speaker, Ben? All right. Moving on, is there an oral report from the county executive? From his office?
Sorry. The county executive just asked me to remind the council that he sent out to you all the packet that was received by he and Mayor Borgmeyer from the library district so that you had all those materials. And if you have questions about those, I can try to answer them. In looking through them, I wasn't at that meeting, but it seemed as though they were raising increased demand for eBooks, the cost of eBooks, the salary study that they're a million and a quarter off of what they need to pay the employees, that they need to increase the hours at the branches, and the demand for meeting, meeting space and study space at the branches. However, I would point out to you that the library board, I reached out to them today, they not only delayed the decision about anything for 30 days, but they are establishing what they're calling listening sessions to the public all summer. So it looks like it would be the end of the summer or the fall before they make a final decision about what they're going to do. And in addition to that, I noticed on the website, just so the council is aware of it and our constituents are aware of it, that in addition to this message from the board chair and the CEO explaining some of this, there's also now a comment forum on there that you can ask questions or make comment. And for people who may have trouble getting to the listening sessions, it gives them a voice that goes to the, to the board. So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Stop there.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. First up is a resolution, Resolution 2405. Please read this resolution.
Resolution 2405, sponsored by council as a whole. A resolution encouraging the St. Charles City-County Library District to preserve access to our county's libraries, whereas the county council believes the education of our youth and the opportunity for all to grow in knowledge and understanding is greatly enhanced by a vibrant library, library system. And whereas the St. Charles City-County Library District provides a valued service to the residents of St. Charles County and contributes to the economic, cultural, and recreational health of our county, and whereas the 11 libraries in St. Charles County are well situated to serve the county's diverse and growing population, as well as the populations in the nearby municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby expresses its opposition to the proposed closures of the St. Charles City-County Library District's three identified branches, and strongly encourages the St. Charles City-County Library District to look at alternatives that will help maintain the financial health of the St. Charles City-County Library District without negatively impacting the residents of St. Charles County. Section 2, the St. Charles County Council urges the St. Charles City-County Library District Board to request that the state auditor conduct an audit of the St. Charles City-County Library District in accordance with its duties under state law.
Okay, questions or comments on the resolution?
I got a question. Was that, did we just receive that audit? Was that today or Friday? When did we receive an audit? 2023 audit from the library? Did you guys see that?
Yes, yes, it was.
I haven't had a time.
It was off the web, their website is, is where it was.
Right, and their 22, 21, and I think even their 20 are also on their website.
Yeah.
Did Brian, you have any chance, I guess you probably haven't had time to look at it? No? I mean, I've heard some complaints that there's a lot of, who knows, but they're spending a lot of money on consultants and things like that. What I don't understand is the taxes, like this gentleman said, haven't went down, they're going up, and to be closing libraries doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. It seems like they're overspending, obviously, because they're not balancing their books. So it's, it's not good. I mean, obviously y'all agree, so that's why we're doing this, but it just seems to me it's looked into.
Yes.
Counsel.
Well, I was really shocked to see that apparently our library system is in such disarray and is so far from being able to supply the needs of the county that they want to close libraries. I know, as some of the people here have spoken, and probably all of you, everyone in St. Charles County loves their libraries. I'm not quite as old as Larry Bosher, but my husband was. And ever since 1958, I walked one and a half miles every two weeks to the only library in the city of St. Charles, which was the Catherine Lineman Library on Jefferson Street. And you're all nodding. And you're all nodding your heads. And we love our library. I was on the library board for close to 10 years before I became a judge and had to resign. During that period of time, Carl Sandstark was the exec, was the leader of the library system. And what we did when I was on that board is we opened several new libraries all across St. Charles County, places where there was no library. That was Carl's mission, and that was the mission of the library board. And we did it in a very fiscally responsible way. I think a lot of those libraries look alike because it was a cost saving that we could design those libraries based on the other ones, not design each one individually and therefore spend more money than we needed to. And I'm just shocked that we now have such a problem. And it does seem to have exacerbated since we have the current library director. We really don't need that kind of dissension. We need to love our library. We need to be able to use it. We need to be able to be proud of it and not have all of these controversies. And so I'm very supportive of this resolution. And it does seem to me that some of these decisions were about to be passed, except for the fact that huge numbers of St. Charles County residents who love the libraries showed up and said, wait a minute, what's going on here? Not so fast. So I think we need to keep our eye on that situation and make sure that we get the best for our money and the best for, most importantly, the citizens of St. Charles County. So thank you all for being here. It's important for us to keep going on with, with this mission. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to look at their 23 budget, and I thought it seemed exorbitant that they spent $3.5 million on books and videos and I guess these eBooks that could have gone to help keep these libraries open. So I'd like to see them all stay open and do, and I'll do what I can to assist them.
Anyone else?
So I would just say, first of all, thanks to Matthew Seeds and to the rest of the library board members who agreed to table this at the special meeting that Mr. Bosscher was talking about. Because I think the biggest thing for most of us, and why people are in such shock, is we had no idea. I don't think what's going on with the library is anything new. If you look at what we got sent in the presentation, the costs have been the cost and have been going up for a very long time. So this is not something that just dropped last week, and here we are. This is something that's been going on for a long period of time. So I guess my biggest question to the director, and probably to the board as a whole, is why didn't we know about this earlier? I understand the biggest issue that they talk about is the electronic materials are so costly. And I don't, I don't have a full understanding of everything that's going on with those materials, but I understand they're very expensive, and they basically rent a book for two years, and then they have to go back every two years and rebuy that book again. And I've heard different numbers, but talking about, I know normally when I would check out a book, Hoopla is normally the one that I would use through the library app, but they've got a couple of others. And I think they pay 60, 50 to 60,000 a month for each one of those services to be able to do that. And I've heard even higher numbers. But the biggest question I have about that is, why wasn't the public informed much earlier? And why is closing two branches and then making another one a warehousing area the first solution that we hear? I mean, I use Audible because I'm in my car all the time. So I listen to books more than actually read them. And I pay $15 a month for an Audible subscription. And I think the people of this county may be open to, you know, if I want to use electronic resources, I would be willing to pay a fee to be able to have access to those. But that's just one idea. That's not the idea. And I don't even know if people want to do that. But the whole question is, why haven't we started that conversation with the public before your answer is that? In closing two branches, or closing three branches and using another one for warehousing? I also don't know if the city of O'Fallon would allow Deer Run to be a warehousing storage facility. That could come back to zoning. And I don't know what the city of O'Fallon zoning is for that particular branch. But all those things are kind of skate around the issue of what libraries mean to the people in our community. The biggest problem, like when you talked about oversight, and the most frustrating thing for this council, and you saw it earlier this year when people were upset about materials and things like that at the library. We have limited oversight of the library district. The county executive gets to appoint five members. The city of St. Charles mayor gets to appoint four. But unfortunately, they are their own political subdivision, unfortunately, unfortunately, depending on how you want to look at it. But once they get appointed, our powers are pretty limited as to what we can do. So I appreciate you think that we have oversight, but we have limited oversight. And the best way that we can really do long-term change, and I think the county executive has started doing that with the people he started appointing to the board, is put people in who are more fiscal conservatives to the board to make sure that they are being sound in their decisions that they're making. So that's a long way to say, this is the first step to say, the council as a whole agrees with you. We don't want to see these libraries closed, and we want to see the library board go back and look at alternate ideas of how we might be able to keep that open. If you can get to this point and say, here's the whole presentation that I have. The one thing I do agree with the library director is, we shouldn't look back, we should look forward. I just disagree with his vision of going forward. I think there's a better way for us to serve our community rather than close branches that are in our particular neighborhood. So I appreciate you guys showing up tonight and speaking your truth.
Mr. Swanson?
In one final statement, I agree with what everyone said up here. Show up to those listening sessions that they're doing. Because if no one shows up, they're going to go back to the way it was, where we don't know what's happening. You've got to be active, you've got to be involved. So thank you for all that you guys are doing. And let's just keep, keep those libraries open. Deer Run's the one I go to all the time, so it'll definitely affect me. That's my go-to, so.
All right, that's all I have. Any other comments? I believe we should call the roll.
Resolution 24-05, sponsored by council as a whole. A resolution encouraging the St. Charles City County Library District to preserve access to our county's libraries. Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Okay, Resolution 2405 has passed. And again, hopefully, this council, along with other governmental bodies in the county, have sent a very, hopefully, a very strong and meaningful message to the library director and the library board to get some, some things going in the right way. Now we have bills for final passage, and there are only one of those, Bill number 5296.
Bill number 5296, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental core public health functions contract and memorandum of understanding in conjunction therewith with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for services to residents of St. Charles County and acceptance of funds across fiscal years 2024 through 2027.
Questions or comments on 5296? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5296, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental core public health functions contract and memorandum of understanding in conjunction therewith with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for services to residents of St. Charles County and acceptance of funds across fiscal years 2024 through 2027. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker? Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Bill 5296 has passed. Up next are bills for introductions, starting with Bill 5297.
Bill number 5297, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to R1E single-family residential district per application RZ 24-02.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to Bill number 5298.
Bill number 5298, requested by Dr. Mary Case, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute contract DSS 25LA 0007 for autopsy services with the Missouri Department of Social Services for child death autopsy services.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to Bill number 5299.
Bill number 5299, requested by Ryan Graham, sponsored by Nancy Schneider. An ordinance authorizing Amendment Number 2 of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement Airport Improvement Program Grant, Project 21-111A-2, CFDA 20.106, to design and construct taxi lane pavements at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field.
Questions or comments on 5299? Seeing none, are there any bills to be removed from the table? Seeing none, we will have announcements in miscellaneous. Does anyone want to contribute?
I'd like to say congratulations to Kevin Colleen, Don Van, and the St. Charles County Veterans Committee for putting together a really nice event yesterday for Memorial Day. The turnout was fantastic. Brian, we got to talk about putting a parking garage in the park, I guess, if we're going to do that. We, we really had cars all over the park yesterday because so many people came out. We had some, some great speakers. Unfortunately, we just lost a Marine. His widow and her family were there. We had six different state reps who showed up. Mark Matisson was the lead rep for that, and they gave the family a nice presentation. That was really good. Mark Schmitz came out and spoke, Jared Schmitz's father, and talked about the Freedom 13 Foundation that he's put together in Jared's memory. And then Andrew Bailey, our Attorney General, showed up, who I don't know how many of you know, but he is a combat veteran with the United States Army and did two tours overseas. And he just did a fantastic job. I think Kevin and I were talking, and a lot of times when you get to events like this, you can get to hear some flowery speeches, and people kind of get off point. And yesterday was really good. All the speakers were really heartfelt and just a really nice ceremony, one of the best I've ever been a part of. So thanks to everybody who came out. Again, to Kevin for doing a great job and the Veterans Committee here for the county. Great job for the Veterans Committee in putting all that together. So hats off.
Any other announcements? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for your involvement.